Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Somersaults, as I guess it is, June 21st, meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Millis. I have with us tonight other Select Board members Craig Schultz and Erin Underhill, who will be joining us remotely, our Town Administrator, Mike Kozinski, and our Town Operations Manager, Maureen Kanesi. So, welcome. Okay, we have a number of things on our agenda tonight, but the first thing we're going to do is start with announcements, and tonight they seem to be relatively limited. The first announcement is that of the Town Center Study, which is a listening session, and perhaps Bob Weiss would give us a little background on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Next Monday, the 28th, at 7:00, this board is going to be hosting a listening session, presentation regarding the Town Center Study. This is a study that we have been working on for several weeks. We were going to be working on it most intensely by the end of this week with the Urban Land Institute, and the Urban Land Institute has many documents regarding the Town Center Study. The Town Center has talked to staff members and will be talking with property owners and business owners in the Town Center. And they will present to us next Monday night at the Select Board meeting their preliminary report, thus giving everyone in town who can come to the meeting an opportunity to comment upon their preliminary report. And within a few weeks after that, they will incorporate that information from next Monday with the information that they've gotten this week and the past few weeks, and present a report to us as an analysis and study of what the Town Center is right now, what its status is, and what we might want to consider in terms of planning. So that will be next Monday night at 7:00.
Thank you, Bob. Just to reinforce something there, the next Monday night meeting is virtually exclusive to that report and to the discussion that will ensue therefrom. So, please, if you can attend, we look forward to seeing you at that time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to our next, and we're going to go to some of our appointments at this stage. The first appointment we have is for a public health nurse, so I'm going to ask our Director of Public Board of Health, John McVay, to come up and let us know what's going on here.
Oh, good evening, Select Board members and Chair, Jiminy. Yeah, I would ask respectfully that the Select Board look at the new appointment for the public health nurse. Her name is Sarah Ward, and she's sitting back here. I don't know if anyone can see her back there. She is a Millis resident and an RN, and she has good experience. And as we all know, we definitely need a public health nurse. The last year, you taught us anything. Nurses are very important. So, we would again respectfully ask that the board consider her appointment tonight, and I think this should make a great addition to the Town of Millis.
Well, I have to say, looking through her credentials, she's an outstanding candidate. We couldn't be happier to welcome her aboard tonight. Schultz?
I've read the resume, and it looked great. Make a motion.
Ms. Underhill, do you have any comments?
I have nothing further to add.
Okay, I'll make a motion, and that's just... I move, I should appoint Sarah A. Ward as the public health nurse.
Second.
So moved and seconded to appoint Sarah Ward, a registered nurse, to become the public health nurse for the Town of Millis. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And this is very interesting. I don't have to poll the board for the first time in many, many months. So, welcome aboard, and glad to have you. Thank you very much for your volunteering to do this. We really need it. Thank you very much.
Oh, absolutely. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Okay. Our next appointment is for DPW heavy equipment operator, and I'll ask Mr. McKay to please go up and present that.
Good evening. Like you said, we have to get used to this also. Much easier sitting behind the desk. I thought, oh, I can pull this form up. I was just kind of printing everything out.
Yeah, exactly. I'd organize the papers.
So, I would ask that the board approves the Town Administrator's appointment of Tyler Winaker. No, it's not Winaker. Win- Aker.
Winaker.
Winaker. He's a 100 Countryway Rainham. Tyler has experience with the transfer station. He will be filling that position. Most importantly, this position was voted on at the Town meeting for the extra DPW worker, which was unanimously voted by both the board and the Finance Committee and everyone else. This will bring the DPW staff up to 14 full-time workers between water, sewer, general, and stormwater. Tyler does have his CDLB air brake license. He will have to get his 2B hoisting license within six months of employment. I don't see that being a problem. He met with myself, the DPW superintendent, last week. He met with the Town Administrator today, and this appointment will not go into effect until July 6th, Tuesday, July 6th, because the position doesn't open up until July 1st. The funding for that does not happen until...
Mr. Chairman, I did meet with the applicant this afternoon. He appears to be an outstanding applicant. The Cory check I think has been completed, and he will be going out for his physical within the next day or two. So, it would just be pending a successful physical.
Comments from the board? Ms. Underhill?
Have nothing to add?
I have nothing to add, so I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the hire of Tyler Winaker, 100 Countryway Rainham S for DPW heavy operator, under equipment operator.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Tyler Winaker for a heavy equipment operator pending his physical. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard Tyler Winaker.
Thank you.
Okay. We have appointment of a full-time firefighter paramedic, and for that I'm going to ask... Wait a second here. I apologize. I apologize. Summer seasonal DPW worker. I'm still picking on my reading. Don't pick on me. It's getting there. We're getting better. I'm sorry. So, Mr. McKay, again, I'll ask you to please...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that the Town Administrator approve the summer help for Colin Christie. Colin is a junior, now senior, at Millis High School. He just graduated, and well, he'll be a senior this upcoming year. He's very excited to join the summer help workforce. You've already appointed two, and this will bring the summer help workforce to the three full-time employees that we usually have from year to year. He will... So, I'd ask the appointment to be effective as tomorrow. Colin has passed his Cory check, his physical. He had that today with a jerk screening, so he's already, and he's willing, ready to start weed-whacking tomorrow.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I recommend and request that the board vote to ratify my appointment of Mr. Christie to the position of summer help, effective tomorrow.
Excellent. Any comments from the board? Ms. Underhill? Motion, perhaps?
I move that we approve the appointment of Colin Christie to the full-time summer help position with the DPW, pending a physical.
I'll second that. So moved and seconded to appoint Mr. Colin Christie for a summer help position in the DPW. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard. Thank you, Mr. McKay. Okay. Assuming that I have this correct this time, I apologize. We're now going to talk, I'll look for an appointment for a full-time firefighter, and I'll ask the fire chief, Mr. Ricky Barrett, to come up. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. With the retirement of Jerry Howley last month, we have an open position to fill. We had hired a temporary position, Christopher Emswiler, with the stipulation that he would complete as paramedic and all the requirements therefore that the Town has set forth. He's completed all those requirements, and I've forwarded it to Mr. Kozinski for an appointment effective July 1st.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kozinski.
Following up on the chief's request, I am requesting that the board vote to ratify my appointment of Christopher Emswiler as a full-time firefighter paramedic to fill the open position in the department.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the board?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the appointment of Christopher Emswiler and... Emswiler.
Emswiler.
As a fire, temporary firefighter, nope, as a full-time firefighter paramedic to fill the open position. And he will also need to become a certified firefighter one slash two level through the Academy by the end of his probational period, and this will be effective July 1st.
Second.
So moved and seconded to recognize the appoint, to recommend the appointment of Christopher Emswiler. Excuse me. He's completed his paramedic certification, and he become a certified firefighter one slash two level through the Fire Academy within his year of probation, and he will start effective July 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Okay. I apologize on that. Okay. The next item we have is discussion and approval potentially, remote participation policy. I'm going to make an opening comment here.
Oh, we're actually, that's been pushed back.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're skipping.
Yeah.
The Conservation Committee got a little excited, and Brian was like, I want to attend a meeting first, so...
That's on hold. Future meeting.
Yeah, I apologize.
If he hadn't missed the first one, I would have let it slide.
Once in a while I get one.
But continue, Mr. Chairman.
Anyway, what's happened is, the Governor, as many of you may know, has ruled over the last week that, in fact, the rules that were put in place for the pandemic will be extended through April 22nd. April 2022. Right, right. And as a result, we as a town need to think about how we want to proceed with establishing a policy regarding remote participation at meetings. Right now, we're operating under a temporary policy, which we will continue to enforce for the next, for a total of, what, 60 days, I believe it is. So, we have time to review the policy and decide how we ought to extend it in permanent status for the Town. I think, given that, I'm open to discussion tonight, but I think over the next couple of weeks, we ought to be thinking about how we want to put a policy together. We have some samples in the back, and we need to think about what things should be in the policy and what issues, under what conditions, we want a policy for remote participation. This is something I look forward, not just to the board giving us some thoughts on, but to all of the public to please submit your thoughts and thinking regarding how you see the public policy should work with respect to meetings with remote participation. Excuse me. There are some guidelines that we will be following, regardless of any of the additional things that we might add to it. One of them is that if we agree that we will allow remote participation, it deals primarily with the board members. We have to establish a guideline, one of which is a quorum must be present for any meeting to be held. There are other guides that we could set up with respect to that, but that's one of the most important ones. Also, if the chair is not available to attend in person, then the alternate, the vice chair or whatever ends up being called on any given committee, must be in attendance. You cannot have both of those individuals not present if you're going to hold a remote There are a variety of other conditions that have been put in place by other towns, and we're going to look at incorporating, not necessarily all of them, but some of them, and I think it's important that we get as much feedback as possible. To that end, I open it to discussion first from the board members if they want to discuss it tonight, but I will postpone and continue any further discussion until at least a later date, so that we have a chance to incorporate all the ideas we receive and all of your ideas into whatever policy we do set up. So, I here ask either Erin or Craig or both to make your comments, if you would like.
I don't know, I'm not exactly sure what I think of the policy in terms of firming it up or adding anything to it past what we've discussed for the temporary policy we have in place. I will say that I personally believe it's ideal for everyone to be in person, if that's the way that everybody is meeting again, because I think it's just easier for communication. But in terms of a situation where you do need somebody, you know, as long as all of this works well with broadcasting a meeting or reporting a meeting, then, you know, it seems like a decent policy.
Yeah, I agree. I think there, excuse me, I think there needs to be a mech... Oh, microphone. I'm sorry. None of my motions are seconded. Okay. I agree, I agree with Erin on that one. I think the remote meeting is beneficial as long as it works. I do think there's a larger benefit, though, for everybody to be in person. So, it'll be up to the committees to decide whether they're meeting in person going forward or how is that going to work.
That's something we can, you're right. That's something we can make recommendations on. There are certain limits as to what we can go further than recommendations, and those would have to go into bylaws. So, it depends upon how firm we are in terms of what we think should happen. In terms of saying there has to be a quorum present, how a meeting is held with an officer who is presiding over the meeting and so on, those are things I think we could establish for the guidelines. But if it gets into, should presenters have to be present and things like that, what I do believe, and I think both of you are saying this, is the whole concept of having people present at a meeting, I think, is absolutely pertinent to the way our government runs. And yeah, in that context, what we're looking at are ways to afford those who are unable to attend the ability to attend a meeting. It's not a substitute, per se, for them to not be present.
And I guess my question is, in the interim period between us picking up our policy, writing the, creating the policy, and today, since the Governor extended, the Governor's acts were extended, could a committee on its own decide they're going to be fully remotely for the next several months unless we take action?
Yeah, actually, yes. Excuse us, but there are some technical problems we have to deal with tonight.
Yes, to some extent, the question in the short term that the board is discussing is somewhat moot, because the legislature's recent action to extend the ability for remote participation for meetings extends until April 1st of 2022. So, really, we're talking more so about getting prepared for after that date, for the most part. So, if committees would like to continue to meet through Zoom, that's up to the individual committee, and that's only until next April. After that, this becomes probably a much more important discussion, because that, then, if certain board members can't make it, are we going to have the opportunity? And again, like the chairman said, you know, the act that the board at least accepted temporarily for this policy allows additional members to attend remotely as long as a quorum is in place and the chair is in person in the room, then members who would not be able to participate, even though the board could meet, can still participate remotely. It's not ideal, but it's better than missing members altogether. So, that, as far as the Zoom, that's up to the boards and committees between now and next April, but as far as, you know, as far as the ability for a single member to be remote, that is pertinent to this discussion here, as far as how boards and committees are going to be able to do that going forward. If you're going to go outside the scope of what the state law allows or how it's framed, we may need a bylaw in order to institute that. And again, I think the key aspects of that, you know, could probably wait till the fall Town meeting or a future, you know, future time, but I think it's important for the board to have consensus on the issue in general, you know, before we get too far along into the fall.
And again, I'll just do it that way. I'll see if I can... I guess my question was more along the lines of, the board doesn't have a say today to make the element, the permanent building committee tomorrow night meet in person. It's up to the chairman of that committee. Thank you.
It is, but once they've announced the meeting, which they have...
Yes.
...which was public, they have to follow through...
Right.
...as it was posted, unfortunately, for this coming meeting. Thereafter, they can move forward as per the Governor's guidelines. But I think it's important that we formulate a policy over a period of the next few months so that it be an easy transition and effect in April next year.
Right, and I guess I'm saying I'm promoting of this model right now, and I'd encourage every committee to try to use something like this.
Yeah, I would definitely concur with that. And Ms. Underhill?
Just something to throw out there. I know we don't have to go too far with this tonight, but I have heard feedback from people that through this pandemic, they have actually enjoyed being able to participate in meetings via Zoom. Now, I know that we're talking about a couple of different things here, that there's a temporary permission to continue as boards and committees have been during the pandemic, and that, you know, separately from that, we're talking about how we would move forward with our policy, ones that has expired. But, and I'm not sure, you know, technology-wise, what the challenges would be, but I think keeping in the back of our minds, if also having a Zoom option is possible for audience to watch, maybe not speak, maybe if you want to speak, you have to be in person. But just, just want to think about a couple ideas like that for accessibility for people.
Okay. I think that's a very valuable set of points also. So, these are things that we need to have at a future discussion as part of that, but again, contributions from the community, please, if you've got ideas, please forward them to this office, and we'd be glad to add them in and have them as part of the discussion as we formulate this policy. Thank you. If that's all there is to it, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time? Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome back, everybody, to live meetings. I think Zoom did work during the pandemic. You know, I mean, you guys will do what you have to do. I think regardless, during public hearings or big or important stuff, I think that the public should, it should be in this room, but if a board member doesn't attend, like Erin tonight, Erin's from home, you can do it that way. But, you know, I mean, whatever you need to do, but I think for important stuff, for big stuff, I think, you know, when you have the public hearings, the big hearings, obviously having the audience, the public in the room, is beneficial, so, so, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the sewer moratorium recommendation discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Only because you are running a little early, which is great, and I know that Mr. Wigan is here from the, from the schools, and there's an item later on the agenda for item 21-179.
Yes, indeed.
I don't know if you'd consider moving that up.
I will definitely consider moving that up. I have to be honest, I didn't notice that we were ahead. It's very seldom that seems to happen.
I noticed and wasn't going to say anything.
Thank you.
Sorry if I did.
Well, we've known it's jinxed us many times in the past, so let's see if we can move forward appropriately this time. I will therefore ask Mr. Wigan, if you're willing to, to come forward and discuss approval of the statement of interest letter to the MSBA regarding the middle school, high school renovation or whatever project.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the school committee has voted to put forward a statement of interest to have a project with Milford Middle High School. I want to stress that this is the first step in a very long process. It doesn't mean that there's going to be any kind of vote this fall or next spring to propose a new school, far from it. It's doubtful that we would even get a response from the MSBA this year. Usually takes many years before you get on the list, so to speak, and at that, the first thing that happens is you have to do a feasibility study, and then, if your feasibility study comes back, then it comes to a vote. It's a many-year process, but this is how you get on the Massachusetts School Building Authority's radar screen, so to speak. It's a two-part process. The school committee has to vote to approve it, but it also requires a vote from you folks to decide to put it forward. There is no obligation that the MSBA provide funding for a project when you vote for it. There is no obligation that you accept any funding for the project or put forward any funding for a project. You can reject it anywhere along the way. So, this is, again, literally a vote to put this forward on a radar screen of the MSBA, to say, we have a problem with our middle high school. We've cited it in the resolution that you would vote on tonight. I think there's four, if I remember correctly, and have them consider it.
Thank you. Well, it is something we discussed earlier. As I recall, we were going to ask you to finalize the proposal, which I believe you have done.
I believe I have, yes.
And as you point out, we are making absolutely no commitments at this time other than to say, we want to get it on the radar for potential of being accepted at some future date by the MSBA for funding once we reach some point, but that's years potentially away.
Correct.
I think, I think we've talked last time, typically six to 10 years before we have to, before anything's going to be finalized, but at least we get on, get on with the process. So, I will open this to comments and questions from the board.
I think we talked about a great deal last meeting. I have one procedural question. I'm just reading over the motion that's here.
Yes.
Why does it go item two, eliminate of existing overcrowding, item four, prevention of severe overcrowding? Is it addressing questions on a questionnaire? I'm just wondering why it's not one, two, three, four?
Yes, if these are priorities, those, that wording comes directly from the priorities in, there are seven priorities that the MSBA has that you can choose from.
Okay, thank you.
That's their wording.
I was just wondering why it wasn't sequential. It was bugging me.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Perfectly logical question.
Are there any other comments from members of the board, from the audience? Do any of you have any comments, questions? In those conditions, I'm going to ask for a motion on this.
I can read the motion that's here, if that's what, unless you want to go, Aaron. I have it written out and a microphone, so. I move that having convened an open meeting on 6/21/21 prior to the SOI submission closing date, the board of, the select board of the town of Milis, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinance, has voted to authorize the town administrator to submit the Massachusetts School Building, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the statement of interest form dated May 26, 2021, for the Milis Middle High School located at 245 Plain Street, Milis, Mass. 02054, which describes the, and explains the following deficiencies in priority category, categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, which include two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding, four, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment, five, replacement, renovation, and modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy costs in a school facility, and seven, replacement of an addition or obsolete building, of an addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specify, acknowledge that by submitting this supplement, the statement of interest form, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the MSBA or commits the Milis School District to filing, filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Seconded. So move seconded to accept the proposal as just stated for starting the process of asking the MSBA for funding to help resolve problems, as noted, for the Milis Middle School. I will take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, so.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to point out that was one sentence. I think somebody at the school needs to discuss what a run-on sentence is and deal with that. Thank you.
I'll work on that one.
Thank you very much, and just for the record, the MSBA drafted that one sentence, not the Director of Finance and Human Resources.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Wigan. Let's see, we're still a little ahead of schedule. I was going to say, building fees waiver, or do you want to do tangerines? Let's do the building fees waiver for St. Thomas Church. That's number 178. Okay, the item we're taking up next is a review and approval, potential approval of the building fees waiver for St. Thomas Church. Basically, St. Thomas Church has asked us if we would waive the building fee, which is about $900, for the construction that they're doing to replace a roof on their church that is leaking and has caused exceptional problems for them. We have, in fact, discussed this with the building inspector, and he has indicated he's had this kind of thing happen before, and he does not have any objection to it. But I'll ask Mr. Gazinski if you have any comments.
I do not, so if the board, if the board were to approve this, it would waive the, the building permit fee and allow them to proceed and get the permit without that cost. And it's not unheard of for the town to have done that in the past. And I did speak with the building commissioner, and he has no objection or no concerns in regards to the waiver.
Excellent, and this is, it's important to remember that this is a nonprofit organization, and so on. We're not so much setting any precedent as saying, in this particular case, all the groups feel that this is a reasonable way to proceed. I'll open it to comments and questions from the board.
I don't have anything specific, I think it sounds reasonable.
Again, I have, I have no specific thoughts on it, yeah, it seems reasonable.
Well, given that, I'll take a motion from a board member to waive the building permit fee for the St. Thomas Church.
I move that we waive the building permit fee for the roof replacement at St. Thomas Church in the amount of $900.
Seconded.
So move the seconded to recommend removing the roof permit fee of $900 for improvement of the roof at St. Thomas Church. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So that one has to be approved, and that can be passed on. Okay. We're still a few minutes ahead of time, which is rather unbelievable. So I'm going to suggest that we move to item number 177, which is approval of the Tangerines Farm Request to License Town Land for Farming. So, if I can find it in my packet here. Basically, Tangerines is asking that we approve a request to allow them to farm on some of the town land that is otherwise lying fallow at this point and not being used for anything. There are a number of items here that ought to be, that we need to be addressing. But the important thing is the board, per se, only has authority to basically agree or not agree to do something on that land for those portions of the land that the board has specific authority over. I know that sounds convoluted, but it turns out that most of this land is, in fact, land under the direct control of the Conservation Commission. And so it's really their authority. And what the board needs to do is look at it, decide if we want to basically concur with the idea and say that we, in the event the Conservation Commission decides to move forward with this, it would be contingent upon that, that we agree that this is a reasonable thing to do. So it's that contingency that we are basically voting on tonight, not so much the approval, per se, or disapproval for the use of land. I'll let our town administrator probably explain better than I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think you've covered it quite well. Yes, most of the property involved with this request is under the control and custody of the Conservation Commission. So the board this evening would simply be voting to support the license from the perspective of the town and authorize it to move forward with the, with the approval of the Conservation Commission, and the commission would be the one signing the license on behalf of the town.
I will make a couple of other comments. Any approval to use this land by Tangerines or anyone else does not constitute the right to, as a lease would be, to use it for an extended period of time. The town at any time can decide, oh, we need to use the land, we're going to use it for something else. That is the prerogative of the town. And if any improvements have been made to the land in conformity with the agreement or anything else, it's, in essence, too bad at that point. The town has overall right to make whatever change it wants if they need to use that land. So it's not like, okay, we're giving up a lease for X number of years or anything. We can at any time revoke that right and say, we are going to use the land for whatever purpose we choose to use it. Okay? I will hereby ask that we get a motion on whether we want to do that. Wait a second time, let me first, before we take the motion. Are there any comments from the board members? I apologize.
There's one up there. No, I apologize.
I was just curious, I appreciate what you just said, and that was helpful, Mr. Tremaine, but the, I note there had been some talk about those properties in relation to a potential site for a senior center. And I just, and if that is true, because, again, it's just hearsay for me, if that is true, is this piece of land on these properties, like directly related to where the senior center may go? Because if it is, you know, I would just want to make sure Tangerines knows that, even though, you know, it is land that we could do something with whenever we wanted, want to be fair to them for those purposes.
Mr. Chairman, it's actually an excellent question. I have reviewed this, and it does appear that the vast majority of all the property that the Tangerines is looking at for agricultural, agricultural uses is part of the restricted area of the land and really cannot be used for, for really much of any other use other than passive recreation or agriculture.
Thank you.
Excellent question. Are there any other?
No, that is.
I'll open it to questions from the audience. Is there anyone who has any comments or questions? Ms. McInnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy McInnes, 78 Island Road. I would like to see if you could put a condition in your granting that the, what's it called, the generator that they're going to use to irrigate be 100 feet from residents? Because there's a butters to the property, and the last thing you want to hear is a generator going 24/7 for their drip irrigation. And also, could there be a condition about whatever pesticides they use to be bee and bird-friendly? Because there are aviaries, and we have one, and there are fewer butters that also raise bees. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We did pass the right to farm law. I mean, do we have that ability to put those controls in? I agree with the controls, I absolutely agree. I just wasn't sure if, by granting this, we can put those in there with the right to farm legislation that we did pass years ago.
Thank you, I would have to check with council to be sure of that. But I think the town, as the owners of the land, would have some additional rights there, but that's something we'd have to check with council. And certainly before the individuals from Tangerines get in front of the Conservation Commission, we can certainly look at that to make sure that they're aware of those concerns and to see, you know, what controls the town could put on that through a license. I think that the license itself may be an avenue versus the town with a private property owner who owns a farm. Could be a very different situation, so.
Okay. Well, given the concerns that were raised, I think what I'm seeing is that the basic idea, there are no objections, but there are concerns with the implementation. And from the board's perspective, we need to get a resolution on those concerns as to what we can put in wording for restrictions. So if it's okay, I'm going to continue this to the next meeting, the next full board meeting, not the meeting on the 28th, but the subsequent meeting, which I don't remember, the 19th or something. Yeah. So let's continue it until the 19th, and to which time we should have a resolution on those issues. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's fine, yeah.
Ms. McInnes, is that acceptable to you?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. Then that's what will happen, we will continue this until the 29th.
No, 19th. Keep you honest.
Continue to, the 19th, I'm sorry, I'm writing the 19th. I'm saying the 29th. It's not a good night for that, I guess.
That's on schedule though, so.
Yes, so, okay. I'm going to, at this point, bring us to item, I guess it's 174. Is that the one, the sewer moratorium recommendation discussion? Okay. We have had a recommendation from the enterprise committee regarding a moratorium on further sewer connections. For anyone who is not familiar with what's going on, the town at this time has essentially no sewer capacity available that we can legitimately give out to new construction or otherwise without exceeding the limits and restrictions put on us by the Charles River Pollution Authority. The problem we're running into is it's really a more complicated issue because the restrictions are based on actual outflow in the sewer and projected outflow based on properties for which permits have been issued to allow the builders to build. You add the two together, and that's why we are in excess. Now, one has to understand that the way the projections are made is typically, it's 110 gallons per bedroom, and on average, each unit that goes in is considered to be four bedrooms. There are exceptions, some are three. But the point is, if you take those projections, multiply it by the number of units involved, you come up with somewhere, and Mr. McKay will probably be able to give me more accurate numbers, but somewhere in the order of 220, 230,000 gallons per day of capacity that has been approved. We also have perhaps, and I don't know the exact number, but in the 35,000 to 40,000 gallon range based on individuals who have the right to connect, who have paid betterments, but have not as yet connected. So the town is at right now between 1% and 2% over its commitment to Charles River Pollution Control District Authority. And we have to manage that. Now, technically, the town can be fined for going over. Realistically, we're keeping them informed. I will say that the DPW under Mr. McKay has been doing an excellent job of that, and we've been managing the process very closely. Now, a couple of other things happen. As units come on and actually begin to actually pump sewage into the system, it turns out that on average, they have only, they're only using between 50% and 70% of what the original projection was. In the case of some of the over 50 communities, that drops to between 25% and 30%. So it doesn't take much of a mathematician to understand that if you have several hundred units coming onboard dumping sewage, and their rate was originally projected at, say, 110 gallons per day for a four-bedroom house, which is 440 gallons, and they are now pumping actually one-fourth or so of that, they're really only pumping 100 to 150 gallons a day, that you end up with sufficient additional capacity available as they come onboard. The concern is balancing all of that. And the concern is further that even as they come onboard, it still leaves the town with a concern as to how much additional flexibility do we want in the town for new construction or otherwise. That leads to additional options, which are things like, do we want to encourage 40B housing? If 40B housing comes in and has an opportunity to build, the town would like to, as much as possible, encourage that. And so you want to balance what can be done at any given time. So it's not a trivial issue that we're dealing with, it's a balancing act. There are a lot of parties involved. There are a number of restrictions and concerns. There are a number of restrictions and concerns. I will tell you that there are a number of people who have asked, well, why don't we just ask Charles River to expand their plant? And the answer is, it's not going to happen. The state isn't going to permit it. DEP isn't going to allow it to happen. There are many issues involved in these things. So what we have for capacity is pretty much what we have to live with. That doesn't mean that there can't be building. There can be building, but there are different types of ways of disposing of sewage. And so we, as a town, have to begin to think about that, and those are the types of things that I'm hopeful that the enterprise committee will begin to look at in the very near future, in terms of looking for policies for the town to address some of these issues. But in the interim, we have this letter that's asking for a moratorium on all building that uses sewer capacity. And so what I'm going to do initially is open the discussion to first, the members of the board, and to allow anyone who wants to speak to this ultimately, to talk, to allow their input, so that we can get a better understanding of concerns, issues, and overall understanding for the community of what this entails and what the options are. And then we will decide whether we want to vote on this tonight, or continue it, and have a vote at a subsequent time. And that's something that the board members will make a decision on this evening. So at this point, I open it to the board members to make their comments, and I will include in that our town administrator, if that's okay with the board members, so that he can add whatever he would like to what I've just noted. Please.
You want me to go? Sorry. I didn't hear that part. So I've put a lot of thought into this as the new liaison to the enterprise committee. We had a very productive meeting where a lot was discussed, and a lot of my questions were answered. It's certainly not an easy topic, and it's certainly difficult thinking about being able to further develop. So, I'm not, so, sorry. I know there was previously a moratorium in Milis for, I would assume, some more reasons. And in doing that, the board was still able to approve certain projects. Thinking about that, I'm not sure what the purpose of a moratorium would be if the board would, as commissioners, can still choose to accept certain projects. In my view, the biggest benefit of a moratorium would be that developers would know that we're not approving projects. However, I think with constant monitoring of the situation and seeing what the actual usage ends up being as these different projects come online, I think there could be more flexibility for us, rather than having a moratorium set for a particular amount of time. I feel lucky that the, in my opinion, the board members here for the Milis Select Board are responsible and paying attention to this issue, and I think we're all aware of what the problems are, what the risks are, and we've all recognized that there needs to be other plans moving forward, because there just is not going to be more capacity from the Charles River. So I guess in short, to sum up, I don't, I personally would not be in favor of a moratorium, because I feel that we, as the elected officials, have a task to do a job, and I believe we can still do that without having a restriction in place.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah. I'm still struggling with the question I asked last week, or last time we met. We've got 62%, 64% actual capacity, 102% projected capacity. And my question is, which one of these numbers, and everybody says both, but it can't be both, one of these, which of these two numbers is going to get us fined, reprimanded, whatever the right word is, from the sewage treatment place? Are we, are we at 102% projected, so now every project we add is just going to go on top of that? Or is that 64% the number that people are going to look at, the sewage treatment plant? Which number is, are we in violation? If I look at Medway, and that one makes sense, 98% on one, 116 on the other. They're in trouble. We're either not in trouble, or in trouble, and I just don't know which way it goes. So maybe that one, I've got more questions, but that's the first one.
Let me see if I can answer. I just attended a meeting of the Charles River Pollution Control Authority, and the number they use is the 102%, period. There is no flexibility in that. And they do that for a very specific reason. They have to be concerned with rain, rainwater runoff, and unusual events. However, even though there is no stated point that you can go over without getting fined, what is important is that you keep them informed. And what I tried to explain earlier is, though we have gone over, first of all, Mr. McKay and the DPW have done a great deal of work with INI, infiltration and inflow, over the last couple of years, and are continuing in that area, so that we get a better handle on what our actual rates are, and correcting problems that are found where infiltration or inflow are increasing the amount that goes to the Charles River Sewer Facility. More important also is that as the new construction that has been approved comes online, and one example could be Regency, the Glen Ellen project, as those units come online, what we have seen is that they are really coming in, and actual usage, somewhere around 25% at the most, 30%, in that range, of what the actual anticipated usage was. So instead of consuming, say, 440 gallons a day, they're consuming 110 to 150 gallons a day. Well, in essence, that frees up approximately 300 gallons a day that come back to us, because now they're being measured in actuality versus, you know, as a projection. Now, 300 gallons per day times 100 units, that's 30,000 gallons that come back to us, which technically puts us under the 102%. That doesn't mean we then suddenly rush out and say we should be building, allowing building permits for that additional amount, but it does tell us that we are coming under, and it's important to keep that in perspective. That's how we can better manage what we've got. The other thing to be kept in perspective is that we have, as I mentioned, a number of families somewhere in the 70-plus range, who have paid betterments, which amounts to, and again, Mr. McKay, you can keep me honest in this, but somewhere around 30,000 to 40,000 gallons a day projected, but they have never connected. Because of the fact they've paid the betterment and so forth, they are in fact, the sewer users are in fact being charged for that capacity, even though they aren't connected, and so they're not being charged. So the users are getting charged that money as part of the enterprise fund. The point is that if they were connected, what we're finding is that even a four-family home typically only uses between 50% and 75% of the projected. So again, you'd be getting on the order of 200 gallons or so back on a daily basis from each of those. So there are a number of ways in which we will benefit as people connect. But I'm going to emphasize again, that doesn't mean that we want to keep necessarily allowing new building in the town without some restrictions, let's say, without some guidelines that we should put into place. So I'll say that from here.
Thanks. And I think that as, if that's the case, if there's about 200 homes that are being assessed at the higher rate that need to connect, that would move our numbers much more like Franklin's, where we have the 78% actual and the 82% projected, which makes sense to me, you know? So I think that, well, I'd have to see how the moratorium is written before I agree to it. I'm not opposed to the idea of a moratorium. If it's coupled with a solution that has a fair and equitable way to make people connect to the sewer that's passing their house. And I know we've talked about that too. I think that's the real solution. As soon as we get those two numbers to be in line, whether that settles at 82% and 84% or 80, and not, that settle closer together, then you have real numbers to work with, and you can actually proceed. But I, any moratorium that goes in place would have to allow homes that are on the sewer line to connect to the sewer line, so that we can solve that imbalance. I think it needs to be coupled with a, requiring those who can connect to connect, so that we solve this imbalance. I think the real problem I'm seeing is the imbalance between the two numbers, and as those settled, I think we could go forward. But not seeing a detailed moratorium and having time to really study or discuss that, at this point, I, I'm hesitant to push a lot of new growth and new development into these numbers, but I think the real solution lies in getting those two numbers to balance.
I tend to agree. I'm going to add another point that you may not be, and neither one of you may be familiar with. I've talked with town council. It turns out that yes, we can approve a moratorium. No matter what the moratorium is, it is absolutely non-binding on the select board. The select board and the sewer commissioners have every right at any time to make any choice with respect to allowing additional sewer connections. Please understand, I am not suggesting that's the way that we are going to proceed, because even if a moratorium's in place, we're going to do that. I firmly believe what we really need is a policy that looks at such things as 40B housing to encourage it, to encourage package plants, to encourage a variety of things that I think need much further discussion, and quite honestly, I am not knowledgeable enough in these areas to make any discussion reasonable. We need to rely on our DPW and others, but that's where it stands at this point. I, again, Ms. Underhill, do you have anything further?
Oh, we get to say it, I think you're muted.
Oh, my gosh, I was. This is kind of a tough topic. You know, I, while I also agree with what, what Mr. Schultz was saying, there's just so much out there. So I don't know if the, if a moratorium even, putting that in place, even if there was already a plan associated to the moratorium, to get the customers that are not hooking up, but could, to hook up. You know what I mean? So during that timeframe, even if there was a plan for that, that would go in conjunction with a moratorium, I mean, it would just more be letting the dust settle from once these people are hooked up, which is kind of what we're waiting for now, anyway, in between approving new projects. I mean, personally, personally, I would find it hard to approve anything, personally, at this point, since we are where we are, until more comes online and we're able to see what the actual usage is. But I don't know that it needs to be a set period of time, like a year, before we could choose to do anything else. And although we could just approve projects, because apparently we can just do that, you know, I'd still want to take it seriously if we were planning, if we were planning to do something like a moratorium.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that Erin used the words I was thinking, dust settle. Let the, you know, put the moratorium in place, or just not vote to approve new projects, same difference, until the top, the 102 starts falling down, and the bottom number starts growing, until we start closing that differential. If we were at, you know, 90% of our actual capacity, and 90% of our projected, then we know what we're dealing with. But right now, we don't know exactly where we are, and that's the problem that I have with it. But I would like to, I think the real solution is to move as quickly as possible to come up with a solution to encourage those that can connect to connect, and to get Glen Ellen and the other sites fully built up, so we can measure the actual sewage.
I think those are key issues. I think it's also important to understand, the moratorium, even if it were agreed to, first of all, would have no impact on the ability of those who have paid the betterment to connect. And in fact, from my perspective, and I'll speak for myself, I think we need to work on encouraging them to connect to the system. In terms of the actuals, we have enough data that we're beginning to get a good understanding of what projected for various types of homes and communities versus actual is, but this is where I think we need time, as a board, to look at policies, and how we think the community ought to move forward. Because even if, as the two of you have suggested, the dust begins to settle, this is a growing town. We're going to have more projects coming in, and anyone who thinks that we aren't going to butt up against this limitation in the fairly near future is kidding themselves. We could, as of next week, be under. That's possible. But again, that doesn't mean, with what we know, we have, what, 350 units or something at Glen Ellen, I don't remember the exact number, but call it that, and approximately 100 or so have come online, we still have 200 to 250 coming online in just that one project alone, which, you know, it doesn't take much to multiply it out and realize, as they come online, we're going to go well under. So this is a long-term issue that, from my perspective, the moratorium, if it's an impetus to get us to establish the policies that meet our needs in the long term, that's great, but it's a moratorium that is basically saying to the town and the builders, if we decide to move in that direction, that basically the town is not encouraging certain types of growth. The problem I have with a general moratorium letter is, and I'll be candid, if somebody comes in with a proposal for a 40B project, and there may be others where they're LIP or whatever, that could come in, I'm not sure we want to discourage a potential for that kind of a project. So all of these things have to be looked at as somewhat general, and not precluding options that may be beneficial to the community as a whole, and that's kind of what I'm looking at. If, yes, Ms. Underhill?
One more thing. I do, I do think that regardless, we're going to run out of capacity at some point. You know, the actual is going to reach the capacity. So I think what would be, what we really would need moving forward is some kind of, I don't know, evaluation study done. We can't be the only community in this type of a position. What is in place other places that don't have capacity? What are they requiring? What kind of projects are being put in? Because soon it's not going to matter if it's a 40B or not, if we're out, we're out. So we have to see what happens after that, and get those policies in place, and those plans worked out, so that we know what we're up against, or what those requirements would be.
Well, as our representative to the Enterprise Funds Committee, I for one would encourage you to ask that committee, and we do have the chair here, to take that on as a primary task, to help the community understand, propose a policy that will help meet the needs of the community, both short-term and long-term. And long-term, as you say, I think it's very clear, we have a problem. I'm sorry, Mr. Schultz.
First off, I want to say I was not texting, I was doing math, which is what I do on my phone, so, okay. my phone. So, okay. For those of you that saw me working, I just, real quick, quick and dirty, I said if we're doing .399 three-year average daily flow, planning a .241, and Jim McKay can text me later and tell me if I did this wrong. But if everybody who could hook up in that proposed number did hook up, we're at 85 to 90% when you discount, you know, when you use the normal discount. So we really do, as you said, Erin, we're not playing with 20% extra capacity. We're playing with 10, 15. It's just a question of when does the issue hit us, not if. Yeah.
That is correct. There is, the other issue in that is Charles River has an obligation where they'd like to see the limit at 80% because they do have a problem if you get a big storm or something. They're supposed to have a reserve to handle it. I understand what we could all look at, but it is a concern to them, and I appreciate that. But we, as a town, need to think about those things. I will now open it to discussion from the audience. Yes, Mr. Nichols.
You're going to stiff like I am stiff. Richard Nichols, 47 Grove Street, Millis, chairman of the planning board. I appreciate the thought of trying to manage what we have. There's a couple of things that just want to run through. Due to the work that the past planning boards have done and what we've carried on, we're actually starting to get development in Millis industrial also. So what's going to happen if they're shut down, that's going to deter people from coming into the town. So we've had, you know, several facilities that are interested in coming into the town, larger ones, that want to spend a lot of money in Millis. If they hear they can't get sewer, they're not coming. So that's, that's something that we really have to think about. When we do a moratorium, if you say you're shut down, we're shut down. And I know you can specifically go through and do that. But if I was a business owner and I heard moratorium, what that's going to do is make me say, hey, maybe I should think twice about it. Because to get to the point of getting to the planning board, they've already spent a lot of money. So they've done development plans, surveying. So what we have to be is very careful as a town on how we approach managing our sewer. Because that's, I think, what we're really getting down to is, is what do we have left? How are we going to go about it? The other question is, on the 40B, I'm all for affordable housing. I think it's a great thing. The 40B is not necessarily the end-all, save-all of, you know, getting us affordable housing. The way it's set up is they actually only do a percentage. So to say that, you know, we're going to encourage 40B and maybe give them sewer capacity, we may be shortchanging ourselves because we may not get the benefit of the additional housing units that we need to get us up to the percentage. And because Millis is so far behind, we could build a whole bunch of them, and we still wouldn't ever get up to the amount of affordable housing that we need here. So the other thing is that with anything in the town, all of our work takes time. And one thing that I'm afraid of is paralysis through analysis. And what I'm afraid of is, it's a great idea. The thing with building is it's cyclical. So right now, we're building. Say five, six, seven years ago, we were having planning board meetings, and the only person that was here was Scott, and we were talking about one project. So we have to be careful as a town that, you know, we're not missing the opportunity to develop our town in a way that is, you know, helpful, thoughtful, will make us some money. You know, more industrial would be great because it's not taxing the residents, and maybe get some more housing in here. But like I said, I think the word moratorium is going to be a death knell for, you know, any developers, because it's going to be just such a risk. They may not take it. They'll just go somewhere else.
I think that's all important for us to understand. I also think it's important that we understand what the options are so that we know we have limited capacity, regardless of the fact that we're over. Let's be realistic about it. Anyone who's going to come into this town has to understand that also. But that's where I look to our DPW to also come up and tell us as part of a policy we can put together or a plan or whatever, that here are the ways we suggest of implementing over a period of time, whether it's something called, I think they call it package plants, I don't remember, but it's something like that, or something else. And I don't pretend to be an expert in this area.
So on that, a part of the thing, as we all know about Millis, is we're wet. So the thing with the package plant is you have to have suitable soils to do it. So unfortunately, like at the Glen Allen, they had a package plant set up there, which would have worked, and they could have actually taken care of those, that whole development and their own plant. We ended up selling soil. It was the choice that was made at the time. And, but in the rest of Millis, we may not have the opportunity. You know, there is just not a lot of suitable areas. And that's going to limit the amount of open land that's buildable and the areas we can put treatment plants. So I mean, we're, we're going to really limit, you know, where we are able to build. We may end up with a postage stamp that's buildable because like the one down, the one of the developments down at the end of the town near Medway, you know, I would be, I would be shocked if they were able to get soils up there that would be able to put a plant, a septic plant in there.
We need to look as a community at these, evaluate it, and come up with what the alternatives make, what alternatives make sense, where we can put them. Are there existing developments where a package plant would be useful? And it may be that what we have to do is set up some way of encouraging a community that is presently on sewer, maybe over time, to look at, we as a town think it's important to put in a package plant or some other alternative. I don't pretend to have answers. All I'm saying is, we have to look at the whole spectrum of opportunities and what we've got and take that into account for our planning in the future. This is a very difficult task. I also agree that it's one that's going to take time. But we can't be putting ourselves in a position of not being an opportunity community for some of the development that wants to go on. So I don't have the answers to that. This is the kind of thing that has to be discussed, but it should not be discussed ad nauseam.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, that was, like I said, that was my, my biggest comment is that, you know, the, you know, time is of the essence because we're riding the wave right now on development and, you know, for good and bad. I mean, we can get good development, we can get bad development. But pretty soon, what's going to happen is it's going to slow down and there's going to be no development. And then we'll have plenty of time to talk about sewer because there won't be anything happening. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll get up before Dan. I'm sure he's coming next. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim McKay, Director of Public Works. I'd just like to update, thank you for your explanation, both in the board. What a great explanation tonight on everything. Everything was accurate and to the truth and perfectly stated by the board members. We are at 102%. And why are we at 102% capacity? Mr. Schultz, you asked, it is because of what we still have out there permanent. If you look at what has come in front of it, I was on the planning board when most of these were approved, these big developments. The last study that was done for the town of Millis was done by GCG back in January 27, 2020, with the, all these figures. And I think I sent it to the board. It's on the Millis website for anybody that would like to look at it. In the projection of, so we do have a capacity flow, just to answer your, I can read. We have a 638 gallon capacity that can flow to the Charles River Pollution District. And in that, we send 397,000 gallons, and that was back in January of 27, you know, back then. But we have a projection that, you know, previous boards that have already approved of 218,028 gallons per day. And out of that, we have Kensington Place, Dover Road, Eden Street Extension, Acorn Street, Hickory Hills at the time still had 10% needed to be tied in. That's complete. Acorn Street, for this extension that was put in for Hickory Hill subdivision, Farm Street Extension, Cedar Street, Regency at Glen Allen. We have some pretty accurate numbers that I shared with the board. We haven't put it online yet. And I haven't sent that to the Charles River because you have the right to tell me if you agree with it or not before I can send it to the Charles River Pollution District, because I speak for you, not, not myself. And then continue, we have Orchard Street, which is a Glen Allen project. If it wasn't there, you know, Orchard Street and Aldo Side Street would never get sewer tied into them. Area A, they have 31%. That was, Area A is one of the oldest projects we have. 31% still isn't tied in. Area B, 45%. Area E, 11%. We have the Ridge Street development and Cottage, the Cottage Street development. That brings it to a total estimated amount of 218,028 gallons a day. And that is at that high rate of the 110 per bedroom. And that's what the developers came to us and said, we're going to build three to four bedroom capacity homes. They, you know, they said, on the Ridge Street and the Cottage Street, we're building three to four bedroom homes. That's what we want Millis to approve. And I have to also say, a good way to, you know, for the board to look at, we keep on, all these have been, the only ones that are complete, everything other than the sewer capacity that where people paid betterments for, that we cannot take it away from them, is the Ridge Street and the Cottage Street. That, I mean, that's been permitted for years. And this board is, the select board has approved those, both with water and sewer extensions. You know, where are they? I mean, you know, we know COVID. We know back in 2020, it was approved back then. So we're talking almost a full year and a half. And we have not seen a shovel go in the ground in either one of the projects. Also, the Dover Road, what Dover Road is, that's the senior living facility at the planning board. When I was there, we approved that project for 110 bedroom with 15 cottages surrounding project. That's another lodge. And when have they started? They're just coming around now to start working on that. And to address 40B, we have, in this calculations, another 22,400 gallons of, per day. And that's a 40B unit at 114 Union Street, 1344 Main Street. I think that's what the chair of the planning board was discussing. That's already in the calculations that you're not asking to put a moratorium on for $4,000, uh, 4,000 gallons, $4,000. 4,000 gallons. You know, there are still, there are a couple of other 40Bs out there that have come to the board. They haven't filed, they're already into, they're at the ZBA. They haven't come to you yet to let you know what they want to build. Because they still have to have to come to the board, even if it's a 40B, to apply for a water and sewer extension. I have one more point, and it was on the 40B and this, I did have a good conversation, as I know the chair had, with the director of the Charles River Pollution District. Elizabeth, she's great. She's willing to help us in any way. Mr. Schultz, you asked, what, what will they do? She'll just stop signing permits that we send them. And that means that they, they'll stop selling permits for people who have paid for betterment charges. And if they stop signing those permits, whether I sign them or not, that's how we're going to be found illegal with their, with the Charles River Pollution District. So, you know, somebody that, you know, scrimped and saved all that money and paid $35,000, $40,000 up on Ridge Street in the Sewer E project, that finally can finally afford that $9,000 to $10,000, not, you know, including the $4,500 something to tie into the sewer, we're going to have to tell them, no, you can't tie into it. Whether there's a moratorium on or not, because they'll impose the moratorium. And, you know, so we do have some good ideas. She did give us some ideas. I've asked Mr. Carter from GCG to, you know, rework these numbers with the, with Dan, the numbers that Mr. American gave us and with the Glen Allen numbers that I gave you. I hope you took a look at that. You know, they're pretty impressive, and they fall in line with, I think we all knew we were going to have. Like Mr. Jermaine stated, they're 30%, you know, almost 70% less than what, you know, was projected. So when you get, what I would suggest is when you get that full amount, you can make a decision on how big of the project you're going to allow to tie into the system because you can. Whether there's a moratorium or not, the, whether the DPW or the town administrator, we say, you know, no, we're not going to allow you to tie in. You still have the final voice. We don't. It's the board that will have the hearing and allow the water and sewer to be tied in. So another one, another couple of suggestions that we'll bring back to the enterprise committee is working on, you know, solutions. Yes, we will, we're definitely working on the solution on the people that have not tied in yet. What are we going to do with that? How are we going to get them to tie into, into the system and, you know, actually pay into what they've had the luxury to have for, you know, many, many years. There's another big suggestion that, you know, these surrounding towns, how does, how do, is Medway getting away with being 90% and 116% over? They're charging most developers and developers, you know, almost four, for every four, for every gallon that they want, they're charging them 4% II. Now, whether we can do that or not, whether they're doing it through fees for the developer or they're doing it through the fee that, you know, that they pay in for the system to be tied in, that's something we're definitely looking at. Mr. Carter is very much aware of that. And Ashland Institute or something like that. Franklin does it, and I believe Medway also does it. You know, the two biggest managers of the system. When you say 4% II, I know what II is. What do you mean?
Four gallons, I meant. I'm sorry. Four gallons. For every gallon that we would, the developer would ask for, we would ask that four gallons be taken off our II. Money be invested for investigation and repairs for II. I mean, that's one way. We are waiting, at the enterprise, I'm sure the chair will speak later, but we are waiting for town council to come back with a draft letter of, to support, you know, people out there that just don't want to tie in. And they have the right not to, but we just can't take it away from them. So again, you know, we do have 40B in the projections. And I think the biggest thing that the board has to look at is this large list of people that are eating up almost a, almost more than a quarter, if not a third, of the capacity of 218,000, you know, 028 gallons. And if you add in the 44 for the 40Bs, you're almost talking about 250 something gallons.
Yeah, we're, it's a third of our capacity that's tied up there. And we do have to deal with this. And that doesn't mean that we aren't going to drop well below the 100% mark. But we need a plan of how we're going to deal with this over many years to come. So it's, it's much more, in my estimation, than just a moratorium. These are policies that, and they cannot be deferred for years and years. We have got to come to grips with this and put something together and get it out there. And I would say, preferably in the next six months. I would love to see this personally by the November meeting. I don't know if it's attainable, but I would encourage your enterprise committee and others to come up with a policy in these areas.
And just lastly, I did remember what I was going to speak about. It was quickly on the, the grow facilities that are permanent. Most of those, you know, factories, they already have a capacity that's already been built in. They not be, may not be in these numbers. But most of them, they don't produce as much water coming out in the sewer system. And I've talked to all three of them that, you know, the two that are going to be grow facilities. They know that, you know, they have to pull a permit with the Charles River Pollution District. And their water consumption, some of them are upwards of 20, 30,000 a day. Not a day, but, you know, 20, 30,000 gallons. They'll probably be charged for that sewer, but they're not going to, you know, they're not going to discharge that into the system because it stays within, within the building. So I don't think that that's a, that's a big issue with, you know, your approval of them tying in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know. I flash names to the chair.
I apologize.
I just asked Jim, and he said, talk to the energy director about it, and I didn't want to.
It's the lights, Kathy. We're well red up here in that office.
I just tapped you down a couple of degrees on there. We'll see if it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Again, I'm Kathy. Again, I'm sending you an island road and the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee Chair. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for not kicking this down the road. As all of us know, this has been going on, and Mr. Kaczynski can say for a couple of years now. And it's now at a head, long after it should be. But thank you. And the great job that DPW is doing on the II that we learned about tonight, I want to remind you that only the sewer rate payers pay for that, even though it's a town meeting vote. It's not coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of. It's coming out of the overburdened rate payers. And I'd like to mention the Chair of the Planning Board, the new businesses and industries that are coming into town. If they're in existing buildings that have been closed down, the prior businesses have a right, probably, to the sewer hookup. So they would just continue under that. And we've been talking, the reason for the moratorium was that the Enterprise Committee reviewed a bylaw that was proposed by the Selectmen for last year's town meeting. And the Select Board rightfully had some concerns about it and the finding of people that might have it already going by them. And to be fair to them, it is, Mr. McKay said, they've already paid a good sum to hook into this. And we were requesting a moratorium so that we could eagerly start on a policy that would answer the questions about how the letter that was started to the Town Council was working on, but then took a backseat to everything pending the moratorium discussion tonight. And some of the things that could be asked for in a moratorium is, as Mr. McKay mentioned, the II study. But then, once they're given permission to tie in 14 or 15 homes, that they actually begin to start paying, actually start paying into the sewer system fund for this. Because Treska has had it for how many years? Yeah, has been, you know, holding up a reserve for two years. And somehow, Town Council will work on getting them to figure out either, or get off the pot. And sure, people can, it's all about the money that developers can pay to get into the sewer fund. It's allowed, and it's okay. And the moratorium would allow the policy to, as Mr. McKay was mentioning, the priority areas in town that are vital. And I would hope that in any sort of policy, the Select Board would include the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health, because there comes a point where maybe land is not suitable to be built. That the reason for a lot of poor groundwater and everything, say what you might about it, but I'm a believer of this now, that the chemicals that are put on lawns, the runoff from roofs, that's what's getting into the groundwater and also causing destruction and the reason for stormwater to clear that out. But it could be clearly coming from overdevelopment. So I would like to, once Concom finds out it's hooked up in sewer, then I think they feel somewhat their hands are tied. Maybe not. I'm not putting words in their mouth. But I think that's about it that I have to say, that, and first of all, you put, you know, to feel that the developers have been all of a sudden strangled because they're halfway through a project, well, shame on them. They should ask for the first things first. Before you begin any development in a town, you have to go ask for what is the number one requirement that you need, and that would be water and sewer. So let them ask for that first to get a complete sign off, and then go through the Planning Board process. And once again, thanks a lot for looking into this. And Aaron, I'm really glad you were at our meeting. We had a lot of questions. In each meeting, I think all our members that are the committee members learn something each time from, "I didn't know there was a moratorium years ago until I was reminded, and then I remembered." So it's been done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Go ahead.
And that is, I think Kathy's points are valid. My question would be, do we, do we need a moratorium for that? What I would prefer, and this is my view, is these represent policy issues. And I think it makes a lot of sense to propose a whole series of policy issues as to how the town should proceed with respect to development and allowing development in any given areas as we get a better understanding, which we need to get, of which areas, if any, we're going to allow development in, what our policy should be toward development, how do we want potential developers to fund a portion of the system or come up with novel ways, whether it's paying for II in certain ways or whatever. But this is the kind of thing I would like to see as policy issues being proposed, coming out of, preferably, the Enterprise Funds Committee. I think that they're in an ideal position to help put that together. And I'm not suggesting it's going to be easy. And maybe it comes out in a series of policies, because it gets complex. And you propose a few policies, they look good, and as we go on down the road, we see, "Yeah, we should have thought about this. We need to add that." I think it's incumbent upon this board to be flexible, to allow for policies like that, to allow for changes in policies, and to recognize that this community has to be in a position to grow, but to grow responsibly, where we understand there are constraints, but there are potentially workarounds, which, again, I defer to DPW. I don't know what they all are, but I would hope the Enterprise Funds Committee can help in putting some of that together. I spoke too much, and I apologize. Please.
Hi, Alan Handel of Levitt Chamberlain Heights. I'm in favor of the moratorium while you consider all the options, while you formulate a plan. First, great ideas. I would allow anyone that's got a current building permit with gun work to continue and tie in. I would allow work in the industrial area, warehouse, whatever. I would allow that. But single-family homes, subdivisions, if they don't have a building permit yet, you know, let them sit it out for a year while you decide what our course of action should be. I don't think hurrying up and building as much as we can, as quickly as we can, just because the economy dictates it, will necessarily suit our long-term needs. You know, you need a five-year plan, a 10-year plan. Building 40, 100, 200 new single-family homes isn't going to necessarily help you get to that point. Again, 40B projects, we might not have control over that, but that might be something we want to have. There's the old GAF lot on Union Street. At some point, we want to see that developed, if someone wants to step up and do that. But a moratorium's a great idea while we formulate what we want our future to look like and how we're going to manage it.
Well, I appreciate that. I guess my response to that is, considering what the Chair of the Planning Board was saying, I want to weigh that against potential for industrial development, maybe occupying new buildings, whatever, or existing buildings. I don't want to send the wrong message. And I'm not saying moratorium sends the wrong message, but it's something to be considered. And keep in mind that, again, it doesn't constrain this board, as the sewer commissioners and so on, water commissioners, from allowing further permits and construction. But that doesn't mean we would do it. I really want to make that clear. I don't want a misinterpretation here. But what I am concerned with is that we also not send the wrong message, as they say, unintended consequences. And that's all I'm concerned with, unintended consequences.
One way we could address the people that have paid betterment fees and have not connected yet is to allow them to sell their rights. So if someone wants, you have a moratorium, someone wants to build a single-family home, they could buy someone's betterment fee out. So that person's already paid a betterment can no longer connect at that point, but their rights have been transferred over to somebody else.
These are all things that we'd have to run by Town Council. I mean, we talked about, what if they don't? Can they sign off and say, "We just plain won't allow a connection"? Turns out, you can't do that. So I can't answer that. These are things that I would say, we'd have to run by Town Council.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
But thank you very much for the comments.
Yeah. All I was going to say is, as we look at the moratorium idea, if something came back that did carve out industrial as allowable, things like, as you pointed out, most of the industrials already got something on it. But to encourage at least that type of development, I think it's a single-family home type that we're concerned about with the rapid expansion. But that's just an idea. I'm not saying I'm going to take a position on it either way, but it might be helpful to see some carveouts.
Are there any other comments, Mr. Merrickham?
I know you've been late.
In bated breath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board. I'm going to walk this back to the beginning where Mr. Schultz asked some questions, and I read your agreement with the district today. And there's not a word in there about projected flow. Not a word. It simply says that your average daily flow, based on a meter of actual flow, can exceed 628,000 gallons per day, on average. 1.4-something million gallons per day on a peak day. So, you know, I think that, I think there is a need for proper planning here, but I think that jumping to moratorium is an overreaction. I think if you asked Town Council the pointed question, "Are you in violation today?", I think Council would say, "No." I think if you asked Town Council the pointed question of, "Could the district refuse to grant connections because of projected flows?", I think the answer would be, "No." Your agreement is very clear. I remember the days of the moratorium, and there was hardly anything going on in Millis. And I think it would be a big mistake to jump right to moratorium. I've been waiting for policies to be enacted for a year and a half now, and I'm hoping that you, you know, go warp speed on that, because I think that's good for you, and I think it's good for everybody to know. But again, I think that going to moratorium is, I think it's a mistake. I think you're going to, you're going to lose out on good opportunities to the Chairman of the Planning Board's comments. I think you're going to miss out on something good. I think it's going to come down the road.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to comment?
I just had a thought while I was sitting here. We're going to have to really link. There you go. So my thought, sorry, Sam Hockenberry. I am Mike's intern. I don't live in Millis, and I'm new to this whole experience. But my thought, just when drafting the policy, I think it should be based on your percentages, like where you are relative to things, and have a set of priorities and policies for, when we're at 70 percent, we'll allow any sort of building. And when we reach 85 percent, now we want to try to restrict it to these kinds of things and make the higher priority things worthwhile when you get close to your 100 percent. So finding a way to build the policy around your actual percentages, I think is probably your best key element to think about moving forward. And I just thought that, and I thought I'd throw it out there while we were talking about it.
Thank you very much.
It's so professional.
I know. Okay. Well, if there are no more comments, then what I am going to suggest is, there won't be a vote tonight, if that's acceptable to the board members. We're going to defer this, but I am going to once again ask that the Enterprise Funds Committee begin to draft policy, and if we can assist as board members in any way, or if you need any outside help, we need to assist you in any way possible. I will also say that the reason I'm continuing without a vote is, I want to give the community as a whole, over the next few weeks, an opportunity to comment. I'm not trying to defer this indefinitely. I think we agreed that the 19th of July, we bring this up. But I do think it's important, it's an important enough subject that we need to get as much of the community to weigh in. And I would ask, it's not just, "I want a moratorium, I don't want a moratorium." It's, what do you recommend and why? I mean, a moratorium might make sense, but we need to understand, why do you think a moratorium is good? What are the implications for your thoughts? Because we all need to learn from this, and we need to make a responsible decision for the community. Is that fair?
I think so. Okay. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Merrickham.
One other thought.
You're volunteering to assist us?
I would love to assist.
No, no.
One other thing that you might want to consider is, the last set of projections was done a year and a half ago. And I think probably 60, 70, 80 units have come online in the last year or so. So it might be a useful thing to try to update your data for what we have currently. The last projection that was referenced was January of 2020.
I understand. I will tell you that we have better information now, and in fact, that's something, as Mr. McKay, I think, said, we as the sewer commissioners and water commissioners have to approve it before it goes out, but we do have some numbers at this stage. But thank you, yes. Okay, if that's acceptable, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, assuming there's all my paper here. I can figure out what the next item is. 175? Oh, you're right, 175. We have a couple of sewer connection requests coming up on the agenda. So give me a moment to see if I can find them, which I can't. So I'm going to, at this stage, here we go. Ask that Mr. Merrickham, should you come up? And we're going to discuss item 175, which is the sewer connection request I got right here. Thank you. At 1178 Main Street. And you're asking for a term.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that we discussed at your last meeting. This is the vacant property on the corner of Hammond Lane and Main Street, across from the bowling alley. Mark Howe is with me tonight. He's a prospective developer of that land. This is a piece of property that's been kind of on the town's radar for a really long time, trying to get an opportunity there. And I think we have a nice opportunity, and we've filed and requested a sewer connection permit. It involves a Title V flow rate of 4,100 gallons per day. We all know that's not a real figure. Cut that in half, or a third, and that's going to be the actual impact to your system. This is, this is one of these opportunities. You know, Mr. Howe is a prospective developer of this land. He has not acquired the land. And quite frankly, if the town is not willing to connect sewer to this property, it's not, it really can't be developed in any meaningful way. And this, along with some other opportunities that I'm aware of, I think is one, you know, this is in the downtown area. This would be a nice place to get some additional development in the community. I think, I hope that the board will entertain the connection proposal. I'll also throw this out there. I always understood, in talking with the prior town administrator, Mr. Asperwall, that properties who fronted on an existing municipal sewer had a right to connect. He always told me that. And I don't, I think there may be some statutes involved in that. I don't know the specifics of it, but that's something that you may want to discuss with Yeah, it's something that we talked about, you know, because we, even during the moratorium, if we had a piece of property that fronted on an existing sewer, he would always say, "Yeah, there's a right to connect in some fashion there legally." So I don't, you know, I think it's important that we explore what that means.
I'm going to open it to discussion with the board members right now, Mr. Merrickham. And I'll also, again, include our town administrator, if he has any comments to make. Do either of you have any comments, questions, or?
Hi, Aaron, do you have anything?
You can go first.
Okay. I guess my question is, we talked about properties that have paid betterment having the right to connect, and that seems to be a bright line, but this property hasn't paid a betterment, from what I understand, looking at our DPW director.
As far as we know, it hasn't.
Okay. And I'd always, well, I hadn't paid that close of attention to it, I'll be quite honest. But I recall hearing that if you did front on the source, I'd really like to get a clarification on that, because that could change a lot in how we proceed with this. That's an important piece that we need to know from the lawyer. So those are my two questions, really, basically, to follow up as quickly as possible on that. And I know this project is of a time urgency for your client. And even though we haven't discussed much, added much to the next meeting we're having in a week, if we could get clarification on that, we could have a discussion possibly, Mr. Chairman, if that's within your, I don't want to turn it into much more of a meeting, but... but if we can get a clarification, I'd like to resolve it then. Or, I guess our next really business meeting for open meeting is July 19th, you know, looking at this.
I refer to the two board member, my patriots on that. If you both agree that you're willing to put it on next week, assuming we can get...
I could get an answer by tomorrow afternoon, I'm pretty sure.
I'm perfectly willing to put it on.
And I want to be clear on my view of it. It's not that I'm going to say I'm in favor or not in favor right now. I just don't think it's fair to keep people guessing, hanging on and waiting. So if there is a clear, bright line answer, you know?
Sure.
So, anyway.
Mr. Underhill?
I think that's, I think those are good questions. And I think I would prefer to have that clarification as well before I go one way or the other. So I would be willing to discuss this on the 28th, if we're able to get the answers.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, then, we'll continue this to the 28th. I am concerned that we get a clarification, because if it turns out you are entitled, that changes things, and we have to move forward accordingly. But we need to get a full understanding of what we can do at this time, taking into account all the things that have been discussed previously. I want to make sure everybody understands, I have had a couple of conversations with Mr. Howe. He has called me. I discussed it, but I told him that I would not be making any kinds of decisions without talking with the board, and any decisions of any kind will be made in the open with the board. It's, if he has specific questions, he could call me or the town administrator, and we're happy to talk with him at any time. But there will be no decisions, or even discussion of decisions per se, under those conditions, for information exchange only at that point.
Sure, and just to put some context here, I know that some of the board members will remember, but this area in the downtown was just rezoned, really with the specific intent of encouraging development of vacant parcels and redevelopment of existing parcels. And again, this is, I think, another one of those opportunities, as I said, where, you know, this is not out in a residential neighborhood somewhere. This is, this is in our downtown area, and it will improve the downtown area and bring value to the community. So I hope, I hope that notwithstanding the issues around the projected flows, we recognize that we really don't have a flow issue in reality, that we do need to implement policies, but that I think you can certainly go ahead in responsible ways with projects on a case-by-case basis.
I'm going to look forward to any options you may be able to present to us to help us move in that direction. So, thank you. Are there any other comments from anyone in the audience, any of you?
One question. The applicant was wondering if his counsel could contact town council to just discuss the question that we raised.
I, I don't think that's a problem.
No, certainly not.
One counsel talking to another should not be a problem.
Yeah, the applicant's counsel is Vin O'Brien from Dover, so I can relay that to him. Town council knows him, so.
I would just have him wait till late day tomorrow before he reaches out, so I can talk to town council in the morning.
Sure. Great.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So this is continued, and we will address it again on the 28th.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is again with Mr. Merrick, and it deals with the condos at Acorn, just a second here, number 176. Acorn Place Condos 2. So, Mr. Merrick.
So this is a similar, well, it's actually a different conversation. Acorn Place is an over-55 age-restricted development condominiums off of Acorn Street. And the board granted a connection approval for 11,000 gallons per day. We presented you with documentation that they're not using anywhere near their projected flow rates. They're using, you know, 80 gallons per day per unit, instead of, we projected 220. The actual Title V flow rate, I've come to learn, is actually only 150 for a two-bedroom, over-55 age-restricted unit. If it's one bedroom, or three bedrooms, or four bedrooms, you use the 110. But if it's two bedrooms, you only use 75. So, the 11,000 gallons per day is actually higher than even the Title V would have required. So what the applicant's looking to do is to expand their project modestly and bring on 16 additional duplexes. And that would keep you, in actuality, well below what you already approved. And if you use Title V figures, and we corrected them for the fact that the two-bedroom, over-55 units are only assessed for 150 gallons per day instead of 220, it's only an increase of like 1,000 gallons per day. So it's not, it's not going to impact your projections in a meaningful way. So, there's another one that I hope you'll entertain.
Are the existing units still on projection, or are they in actual meter reading at this point?
They have built, more than 50% of them at this point. I don't know the exact number. I think they probably built 60 or 70% of the units up there. So we provided you with information on meter readings that we had for those in the submission document that we presented to you. And it was coming up around 40 gallons per day per bedroom, which is very much the same as the information that DPW provided to you for the Glen Allen project. They were coming up 40 to 45 gallons per day per bedroom, same type of use. So that's the real figure for an average daily flow from a project of that nature, which is, again, it's age-restricted, so you can't have kids in those units.
Well, from my perspective, I would like to hear from DPW with respect to actuals versus projected, where we are on the charts with respect to Charles River, and what they're saying. In other words, if we've said, we've taken, I don't know, the number of units.
So if you look at your last projection from January 2020, I think all of Acorn Place was a projected.
But the point is, if you're still, if Charles River is still looking at it as projected, I'd like to know that, or if some percentage is projected. So we have some way of looking at it in terms, you don't have to answer it all now. I hope you understand.
I do. I can't answer the number. But, you know, this development, we encouraged the developer to put a meter in, and he chose not to, because it was too expensive. So we could have had those actual flows. The Glen Allen project, we encouraged the developer to put a meter in, he, they did. So we know those are actual numbers. So to get what Dan's numbers that he's speaking of, you approved me tonight to send it out to our consultant engineer to check his numbers, to see if it's accurate. And now with this approval, I will do that, to see where those numbers, you know, fall in between the Glen Allen and the, and the numbers that Dan, you know, sent to us. And then when we get that back, we can take that January 27th, 2020 allocation that Mr. Carter did, and we'll adjust it appropriately for you to, you know, reexamine it. That's not going to take...
Is there a particular reason why the developer chose not to put in a meter?
I honestly don't recall that request. But I could be wrong.
Would it be wrong? Would it be unrealistic to ask the developer to put in a meter? He's asking us to make decisions that we may not have fully accurate measurements on, because he hasn't put a meter in.
I think if he was comfortable that a connection would be permitted, he might be interested in putting a meter in, to bear that out.
If he were comfortable that if we don't get a meter projection, he may not get a permit, because we don't know what the actuals are. I mean, it's a flip side on this, and we're not simply...
No, no, I understand, I understand. But, yes, I understand what you're saying. And I'll have that conversation with him. Certainly.
I have a question. When we approve a project like this, do we approve 48 units, or do we approve 11,000 gallons? I guess, that's a difference.
The application lists the number of units and then the total flow. That's what the application lists, lists both.
Yeah, and I do see this one as different than the Main Street project, only because this is brand-new, recent development. And I, I, I find it odd that they didn't go for the whole project when they went for the project. This nickel-and-dime it in is kind of a problem to me. The other project, I get, it's on Main Street, there's never been anything, there's a sewer going by. I'm not saying how I'm voting on it, I'm just seeing it as a different project than this. I don't see a couple of years ago, why, when they went for this, why they didn't go for the whole enchilada at once and try to get the sewer connection done. That's just my opinion.
It's the incrementalism that I think is concerning us, but...
The opportunity wasn't there at the time.
Regardless, the bottom line is, we need to understand what we've got, and right now, some of it's conjecture. Mr. Underhill?
I think the point that you both have just recently made, I would concur with. It does seem strange how the project's compartmentalized. I mean, also frankly, where we sit from our prior discussion, if their actual is coming in under what we had approved, that's good. And that's good for us. It doesn't necessarily mean we would just roll it back into, you know, an extension of that project. So those are just some things we would need to consider. And I think, and you find it interesting that there, that the choice was made not to put in a meter, because that is going to directly impact our decision right now.
Well, I think we can look at a number of things here that, to me, raise a few flags. But then I also have to look at it and say, it's a balancing act at this point between this property, depending upon what it comes in yet, in terms of actual flows that are measured, and then the previous property, which one do you give an upper hand to? And that doesn't mean we approve either of them, please understand that. We're at the point where we need information. But if we should approve one, we need to understand what the differences are, and then why we should or should not approve either or both. That's kind of the balancing area at this point. So, is that stated?
Yeah, I, I think that, I guess what I'm saying is, the Main Street property has always and perpetually, I guess, abut probably one of our older sewer lines on Main Street. I'm just guessing that that...
It's one of your main interceptors.
Yeah, and this one wouldn't have a sewer line that it abuts had it not been for the first application a couple of years ago. It just seems like it's a difference in intent, you know? Because you could always apply for just one more step, and now you abut a half dozen more properties, and then it just keeps self-perpetuating, you know?
I'm going to look for what Mr. McKay has, is able to get to us for how he have all this information. I understand that, again, you're probably anxious to get a decision on this. What timeframe are you looking for, and how soon does this builder have to make this decision?
This one's not as pressing as the prior request.
We need the information, but I'm not going to put this one on the next agenda. It's getting too bad.
And I, I won't...
I need a little time with that.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and I didn't see this one as pressing either. I just know the other one is a purchase that you're considering.
Yeah, and I won't be here on the 19th, so maybe we could put it on for the beginning of August or something like that.
Let's see how, if we get all the information by the end of July, is it, let's see if we can do that. But again, we won't press this issue as fast. Look forward to getting the information back.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along.
See, now you've got no times next to it, so I don't know how we're doing.
I think the next given one is that one.
Well, now, you've taken three of the other items.
This one's going to take a few minutes, but... Okay, the next item that we want to deal with, I look forward to, is a letter to our state representatives and the DEP regarding PFAS. So, I'm hopeful that the two of you have had an opportunity to review the letters that have been drafted thus far. I'd like to try to resolve them this evening, so that we can get this moving to our state representatives. And I'm getting the high sign again, I apologize. Don't ever hesitate to just jump in. So that we can get our state representatives fully informed of the concerns and the issues we're facing, and the DEP to assist us where they can, on top of which, giving us better information that can go out to the public regarding the issues of PFAS. So, have both of you had an opportunity to review these letters? The ones that, I think there was an earlier packet. This morning, I made a couple of minor changes, to be honest. In the first line of the letter to the representatives, I changed statues to statutes. And I think it was in the third paragraph, I tightened it up a bit. At least I thought I tightened it up just a bit from what it had been. I thought the word, a couple of words had been used too often. But that was about it. It says almost identically the same thing. And if that's acceptable to you, I'll obviously take any questions, concerns, anything you have in that area. Please.
I want to commend you for using punctuation in multiple sentences as opposed to the earlier piece. This is quite nice. I, I did read, I thought it was better, and it read better, as the two separate letters. And I think it addresses the audience more appropriately. Everybody's left us, this is so sad, okay? So I, I think that, I'm not one to pick at words. I think you, I think it's tight, I think it's pretty good. I think that it conveys it, and I think it reads much better than that first letter did, so.
If you're willing to accept it, fine. If you would like to add any changes, and I'm serious about that, and get them to Mike in the next day or two, then he and I can go over them, is that fair, Mike? And finalize it. So I don't want you to think you have to accept what's written here. For the audience, so that they understand, because we are committee, a board of three individuals, we cannot discuss items like this letter out of an open meeting, so.
I guess my only thought would be, is there any tranche of money available from the feds, or state, or anybody that we could specifically ask for, for this, that we know of?
We already applied one case.
Yeah, I mean, there may be some opportunities through the American Rescue Act, the federal legislation. There does not appear to be much of anything directly through the state as of this point. We did attempt to request for earmark through our congressman. Unfortunately, we were in competition with our, with every other town in his district. And we did not come up on top this time. But, you know, certainly we will keep trying from that avenue. But I think right now, the most likely sources beyond the town would be through the American Rescue Act. Which might not cover all of it, but could cover, you know, an important portion.
Yeah, or anything else. And my discussions with Mr. Linsky, and Dooly, and so on, lead me to conclude that at least they're willing to vote back for us, and there'll be further discussions in this area. And I'm sure Mr. Gazinski will assist me in this area in this endeavor. Okay?
Good, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I will comment that Sam has been instrumental in helping to get these letters drafted.
Thank you. Well, in the research that I had done in helping draft these letters, I had saw mentioned of a interest-free loan that the Department of Environmental Protection offers in relation to this. So the town would still be on the hook for the full cost of the thing, but you wouldn't be owing the state interest on top of that. So it's not, it's not really money, but it's not, it's not nothing either. I didn't dig further into it, because that wasn't necessarily the object of what was going on, but I did see that in one of the documents that I had run across.
Are there any other comments of either of you? So should we go forward with what these are at this time? And Howard?
I'll make a motion that we submit these letters as written.
Thank you.
So move to second to submit these two letters as written? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you both.
Just keep waiting to be called on by named vote now, it's just...
Yeah, it's a little different, isn't it? Okay, that's this one. I think we're into 181, if I'm not mistaken, the stormwater... credit application of the letters. I'm gonna review something just very quickly here for Craig's benefit. We had meetings last year to review the stormwater situation where approximately 16, I think it was, individuals in town filed for abatements based on what they read in the stormwater manuals and saying that they wanted some credit for work that was done on their property. Mr. McCaffrey, our former chair, held a meeting where we reviewed each and every one of those requests individually over a period, I think it was two days, during which we allowed for a couple of the abatements to go through. But based on the language of the policy that's in place for stormwater, we couldn't and felt it was inappropriate to allow for the abatements to the other properties. Now, let's be clear. Several of us disagreed with the concept that these properties shouldn't get an abatement. But that, the bottom line was the policy was written such that they had installed what they had there before the time the stormwater issue went in. There were a bunch of little "I gotcha's." So a couple of things came out of that. We drafted, I've got here drafts of letters that were put together actually by Mr. McCaffrey with some annotations by me and Sam and Mr. Gazinski to try to respond to these 16 individuals, because it's taken far too long to get back to them. We're literally talking almost a year and a half, I think it is. And it's been at least six or seven months since we held our meeting on the abatements. So we want to get something back to them with the understanding that the reason most of them were denied is because of the language in the policy as it exists. So the first thing I'm gonna ask for is if you concur with the letters as written, so that we can send them out to these property owners.
I'll make a motion that we accept the letters as written.
Thank you.
So moved seconded to accept the letters as written? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, the second part of this that I'm gonna ask both of you is a willingness to review the policy and decide if we want to make any changes to the policy. And I know, Craig, you haven't really had an opportunity to be a party to this. Aaron and I have talked at meetings when we were discussing this. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, so I'll put them in mine. We were looking at the fact that we want to encourage properties to do better stormwater management. And the way this policy is presently written, it doesn't seem to be encouraging a lot of the properties to take additional steps to control the stormwater on their property. So regardless of whether we totally concur in the way it's written or not, I'd like to ask, would you be as willing to look at the policies and see if we might reconsider some portions of the policy as written? We don't do that typically tonight.
Yeah, I'd be willing to reconsider that. I've always thought, though, that the biggest culprit in stormwater were the roads and that the property was a way to compensate somehow for, you know, I guess there's a lot to it. I don't know that we can afford to see a decrease in total collections. I don't want to rewrite the policy that would drive other people who didn't have the wherewithal to put in a heavy-duty stormwater management system in their property. I would hate to see their bills go up as others go down. So I wanted to look at it absolutely, but I think that we have to be realistic about how much money we need from the policy and then how we do it. I don't want to shift the burden, in other words.
I think this is exactly what our concern was too, but please, Eric.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it too. I mean, I had a couple issues with the policy as it's written. And Craig, I mean, you're hitting the nail on the head financially with the fact that we have this utility, so to speak. And we need to fund it. So the, one of, you know, just a minor example, one of my major concerns were based on, you know, your property and however many units. If you had even a single-family house that happened to be rated at a higher number of units, you have to go get an engineer to stamp in a letter that, I mean, and that's the cost for somebody in just a house, like not a commercial property to do that. Seems a little silly if they're already putting effort forth to mitigate the water. So I think I personally would like to do a little bit more independent research and see what other towns might have in place to kind of compare a little bit. But I would definitely like to revisit it.
Yeah. And I guess what I'm saying is I don't want to see a major cost shift where the per-unit cost goes up for those that can't afford to take the mitigation steps, you know? So collect enough to deal with the issue we have. But if, by reducing some other people's because of coal tech systems or things they could afford to put in, and we still need X number of thousands of dollars, I don't want to see the bills go up for those that couldn't afford it. So if it reduces the total collection to the fund and the fund can still function with that, I'd view that more favorably than cost shifting. Yeah.
I think these are all legitimate points that have been discussed in one form or another, but I think it would be very worthwhile to revisit it and have an open discussion in this area, much the way we did for reviewing the abatements, which we probably want to have a session. Let me figure out when I'm on vacation. We'll schedule it at that time and I'll let the two of you go through it. I'm sure you will enjoy that.
You can zoom in from wherever you happen to be.
You'd allow me to do that?
I would. I'd encourage it.
No, but I'm serious in terms of, we'll set up a time that's convenient for all of us to just focus on this one set of issues where we can look at it in some detail and come up with new ideas, recognizing that, you know, whatever the nut is, that nut has to be met regardless. And we have to be sensitive to exactly what Craig is saying, how we shift the burdens. But on the other hand, homeowners also can be encouraged to help mitigate the problem. Okay. And there are a lot of other things we could say on this, but I'll move forward with Mr. Gazinski to make sure we get the letters out and that we try to schedule a time. I don't know if we want to do it this summer or in the fall, to be very frank. I'm gonna be candid. I think we've all been working pretty hard for the last several months. And to try to have a little lessening of the load on us over the summer would be desirable if that's amenable to the two of you. So I'd like to try to defer what we can to the fall where we know we're gonna have a lot of things going on anyway. I just think we need time to breathe once in a while.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, my view is do whatever we can to get more than enough time to consider the items that are gonna be on the November town meeting, like the charter review and these other things that have to come up for consideration and not try to cram everything into a short-term policy. So I'm with you. I'm waiting till the fall if we need to.
As you might know, I think we got charter review on the 19th. Is that news? Yeah, I believe that's already scheduled. So, yeah, I'm trying to deal with them, but balance, but please, if you have thoughts.
No, I think you're on the right track with what you just suggested.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you both. Okay. I think we're into a review of the purchase and sale agreement on the Braun property, item number 182.
Is Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gazinski? So essentially, the document, the draft document you have, the purchase and sale is, for the most part, unchanged. And it was one small change that you see highlighted in red. That was the only change from the original document that was put forward by town council. Council is fine with that change and has indicated that the next appropriate step, should the board be satisfied with the document as put together, to authorize me to sign the purchase and sales agreement so we can move to the next step of the purchase process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. It's been a good negotiation or working collaboration with seller. So everything's been going fairly smoothly. And the town council's in the process to move forward. And then there'd be a closing within 90 days after the site.
Comments from either of you?
I was happy with the purchase and sale before. This doesn't seem to be material change, so I'm still happy with it.
Likewise. Ms. Underhill?
No further comments. Thank you for working on that.
Then I'll take a motion.
I move we authorize the town administrator to sign the purchase and sale amendment.
Second.
So moved seconded to sign the purchase and sale on the Braun property with the amendment as noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Okay. This one is one of those duties we have to do every year. It is gonna take a few minutes, but these are the committee assignments.
No, this is
The liaison.
Updates if you attended any meetings. Committee assignments is on the 28th.
Ah, thank goodness. Ah, but this is just the updates. Okay.
This should be a later lift.
I was wondering about that this afternoon. I thought, oh my gosh.
No, but we're saving the committee assignment for when Karen comes back.
Yeah, absolutely.
She wanted to be here for that.
Okay. All I have is my list from the last week that we had our meeting. Has anything changed on that that anybody is aware of? Any concerns either of you have?
You mean the list of assignments?
List of committee assignments, correct.
Are we gonna be reporting back on what we saw at our committee or is this to discuss the assignments?
This is to report back.
Well, this is to report back, but I also wanted to bring something else up this evening, and I'm hopeful that I'm not violating anything in doing this, but we have a couple of committees in which board members have voting rights. My suggestion is we should rescind those voting rights. Because as board members, we're still going to be reporting back to the board, and then as a board, we have to make some decisions. Now granted, you can abstain or whatever, but I don't want to see a board member put in an untenable position when somebody says, we want to have your vote on this. So it's up to you, but from my experience, it appears that it probably makes sense for board members to be present at these meetings, but not to have actual, to be actual voting members of the committees that their liaisons do. I'm open to comments, suggestions, anything else. Ms. Underhill?
I would agree with that. I, this past year, I was on a committee that I was a voter for and I'm now on a second committee that I would be a voting member of. And I do feel that being a liaison and providing some feedback and listening in and and being able to report back to the board is certainly very valuable. I don't feel personally the need to vote on it within the individual committees. And personally, I confirm not to. So I would agree with that. However, we, whatever steps that we take to change it, so that we don't, are not voting members of any additional committee.
I would agree with that statement. I think, though, it's important to make the distinction that we are members of that committee because oftentimes I've been, not oftentimes, I've occasionally been in meetings where I've been a finance committee representative in the old job prior, but I was not a member of the committee and I was not allowed to speak or comment. But I want to keep our rights to speak and comment, just not our right to vote, you know?
Right. Well, if you designated that ex officio members of the committee, they'd have full rights to debate issues and speak. They would just not have the right to vote.
Well, I think since we're the ones who formed these committees and we're the ones who overall have overall management, I would submit that that makes a lot of sense and that we then become, enable ourselves as ex officio members of all these committees in which we have attended, so.
I'll make a
I was just gonna
I'll make a motion that all select board representatives to committee as our heretofore ex officio members with rights to participate but not the right to vote.
Second.
Moved seconded that from henceforth, all board members are committee, are ex officio committee members without the right to vote in the committees that they are attending meetings at. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. So I think that's a good way to proceed for the future. I'm gonna ask each of you if you've attended any meetings that you want to discuss with us at this time.
I can't recall if the elementary school building committee voted met prior to or after this list came out, but we are done with the project. We have started all the closeouts waiting for money from the state. It's dramatically under budget, three and a half, four million dollars under budget, which is where you want to be. That's not a bad thing. And in fact, it's quite a good thing to be that far under budget. We didn't make any cuts, compromises or anything else in the quality of the structure. We put on a metal roof that was not part of the original scope and we still are dramatically under budget. It will take the, it'll take the MSBCA? To, I have to say it in my head and use the acronym. I should just say it. A few, well, quite a while, six, eight months to get the final reimbursements back out to the town. But it's not unexpected and we are very confident that we're, that the accounting's good, that we're in the right place and we won't have any surprises.
Well, I'm gonna say that I think it's not only commendable, but it expresses the due diligence of that committee with its chair, Wayne Clocko, but all the committee members to have succeeded in a project in this manner. But this seems to be pretty typical of the way Wayne and his committees have functioned over the years, so that's something to be applauded. So, great. Was there anything else?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's understood. That's money we won't be borrowing. There is no refund. We didn't need to borrow that to build the school, so therefore we're not getting that money back. But it does help the taxpayer. It does reduce it below what we estimated. All of the cost associated with school will be less than what the estimate was when we started out.
Right. And at some future date, there will be a rescinding of the remaining debt, right? Once the project's fully closed out. So within the next 12, 18 months at a town meeting, the town will be rescinding the remainder of the unused borrowing.
Excellent. Anything else? You?
I can't think of any other committee that I was on that met, so no.
Ms. Underhill?
Yeah, so aside from the discussion we had earlier regarding the sewer issues, I did attend that meeting and I pretty much already talked about all that. The, I did listen into the school committee meeting, although I wasn't physically present. A few things to note. It does sound like for next year, middle and high school won't need to wear masks. Apparently, there's still, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education at the time hadn't decided for elementary schools what that would be moving forward to the fall. So it's possible that elementary may need to be masked. They're also continuing a program where school meals were free this past year and there's a grant that's continuing that into the coming school year. So that's good as well. I think that was pretty much it.
Thank you. I attended a couple of meetings. One was the energy committee meeting. They are looking at ways to have the town as a whole look at how they might improve individual individual properties to better manage energy in the future. And that goes for homeowners and other property owners. Uh, the committee has done a really commendable job of working with the state and trying to set up guidelines, and you ought to go to the site and take a look at that. But they're now looking at the next level of things, which is how do we encourage homeowners to take advantage of newer energy-consuming items, appliances, putting in, um, solar panels, things like that. Uh, there's a lot of information on the energy website, which unfortunately I do not have the actual site in front of me, but is available at our energy office from our energy manager. But now, they're trying to look at better ways to even increase the energy efficiency of the community as a whole. And this is something that we, as a community, need to participate in to a greater level because it's more than just a committee. It's all of us thinking about that for the future. So, that's item number one. Um, there was one other I think I got involved with. Uh, I'm trying to see if it was an actual committee meeting. Oh, yes. I attended the Charles River Pollution Control District meeting the other day. Um, they are working on a number of things to try to control the amount of flow into their system from the various towns. I mean, we've talked about it this evening for our town, the constraints placed on it, but they too have constraints, and they're major. They also have some major repairs that they're in the middle of making, a burst pipe, among other things that they're working on. But the one thing that I can tell you is they want to work with us. If we are open and work with them, they will be working with us. So, it's the flow of information between the two. They had a lot of very positive comments to make about our DPW and the way we're trying to work with them, the work we've done with I&amp;I over the last few years, and they're hoping to see that improve, and they understand the constraints we're under, and they'll work with us, is the best way I could say it. So, it was very useful. Um, I'm going to tell you, I am not available on their next meeting, which I believe is July 20th. I don't know if either of you is available.
When do they meet?
They meet in the middle of the day, Craig, about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So, if you're not available, I'm going to ask Mr. Gazinski and perhaps Sam or Mike Tensley.
See, we'll be done by then.
I'm, I'm done at the end of July, so...
Well, this is July 20th.
Oh, then I am good.
I'm so glad to hear that.
I thought you said August 20th. I was like, I'm gone.
No, no, no. You, you lose, Sam.
Well, continue to expand your horizons, Sam.
I have to get a full month on the job before I can disappear in the middle of the day.
Yeah, right. No, I understand. And I didn't mean to, I'm sorry. I don't mean to pressure you in any way that way, but, um, I have a, a commitment that I cannot avoid. So, good. If you'll attend, Sam, I'll get you the information so that you'll know what, and everything. As you're done. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you need me, I could make myself available.
I know.
Just use the, so just let me know.
You are wonderful about committing to things like this, but I look at it and say, "Sam has been so extraordinary in taking notes and dealing with issues like this. We'll give him the opportunity to represent us at a meeting."
That's great. Yeah, I appreciate it. Sam has wonderful work so far.
Okay. So, that's coming up. And a meeting date for stormwater and management policy discussion, well, that's what we were just discussing a short time ago. Um, I guess the real question is, do we want to put that off and we'll set up a meeting in the fall? Uh, I have no problem with that if it's acceptable to the two of you.
Yeah, I might, I might recommend the board to have a special meeting, you know, outside the cycle, um, maybe in the early to mid-September. That would be my recommendation.
And I will comment that around the 8th or 7th or something, you know, of September, I'm gone on vacation for a week. So, you're welcome to hold your meeting at that time, but no.
Keep offering that. No, I don't think we're going to take that up.
You know, you were going to invite us along.
Okay. We'll be up in Maine. What can I say? Okay. Um, that's pretty much it. What I'm going to do now is tell you that we are going to be adjourning to executive session, and as such, we will, I don't know, suspend the meeting?
Um, actually, I would, yeah, just vote to go into the meeting and to come back and to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Right.
And just list it on the list of three reasons.
We will suspend this meeting temporarily while we're in executive session. The executive session tonight has three issues that we're going to be considering. The first is to consider the purchase, exchange, and lease value of real estate at parcel 61A, which I believe is, was that the?
That's the Braun property.
Braun property, yes. And I think that most of the community is familiar with what's going on there. Uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiating with union personnel on the fire contract, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel on the SEIU, there is agreements that we have to deal with. So, with that, I'm going to, um, ask that we have a motion to suspend the meeting.
I move that we suspend the meeting with everything Mr. Jermaine just said.
I second it. Okay. Let me, I'll poll the board. All in favor?
Can you roll call vote for this one?
Oh, we do have to even hear. Okay. So, I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Okay, the meeting is hereby suspended. We will come back, open the meeting briefly, and then adjourn.